We will call the November thirteenth, 2018 Plan Commission meeting to order at seven o'clock. If you'll join me for opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business, got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move to approval of the agenda. Your motion quals for approval?
Second.
Second. Carol? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Move to citizens' comments. No citizens' comments tonight. Go to approval of minutes from the October nineteenth, 2018 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
First. Second, Anderson. Any discussion on minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Thank you. Moving to old business. Item one, Western Woods subdivision phase four. Request for subdivision acceptance and reduction to a maintenance bond. Thirty-eight lots on five point nine acres, located along Wiley Circle, Spicer Court, and Colquitt Way. Property zone RS five PUD. So we had a little comment note that some of the repairs have been made. I guess still unknown to the pond?
That's correct. I did speak to the developer who indicated that he had met with all of the neighbors who had come to the meeting previously. He had taken their names and addresses and their various complaints and went out and between himself and the builder, they took care of all of the items, did a walkthrough. Apparently, everybody was satisfied. I haven't talked to anybody from those folks that had been complaining previously. I haven't spoken to anybody about them being unsatisfied at this point. As we had discussed previously, you know, all the infrastructure was done. The main issue is the pond, which is actually not even part of this phase, so that's where we are.
You know, I just, I feel like we need something in writing from these people, something. And we need him to come back and tell us, this is what we're gonna do. I mean, I get that it doesn't have to do with this phase, but some of the issues from this phase draining off into that pond is still a question. And so I think really to feel good, we haven't solved anything from last meeting, you know, just besides no one else has come and complained. You know, we do have minutes that we can pull where they spoke, maybe at least get something in writing, an email if you could do that, saying, you know, we're satisfied that our complaints have been met. That would at least make me feel better about it.
Right. It's just good business. Get it in writing.
I mean, you know, obviously, they're not here, so we could assume that they must be happy. But, you know, I just wouldn't feel good about it until we had something, you know. And I know we can't say everybody because we don't know who all was here, but if they signed up to speak, we need to at least reach out to those people. And then it's still gonna leave us, and I won't be here for this, so just I'm gonna say it. It's gonna leave us with the issue of, you know, are we fixing this problem? And it is a problem. And it has been for years. So are we gonna lose any opportunity? And it's gonna be time that either the city needs to decide, you know, if we can do something to help, then we need to do it. And if we're gonna hold the developer responsible for it, then we need to do that, too.
Well, I guess it's been at least two months ago, or when the city manager was here one night, two, three months ago. We were gonna see about getting the culvert fixed. We were gonna talk to the landowner about cleaning the ditch out. And I don't know that any of that's been done. And that was, that was not just the developer telling us. That was our city manager telling us, and still, we don't have an answer from either developer or the city manager on this. And I...
From what I've been told, they were unable to reach them, the property owner, but...
And... But it was gonna be taking, something was gonna be done. And still, I just don't see anything done on this. I do think that the developer over there has went back and fixed a lot of the problems. I can't remember each and every one of them, and some of them may not be able to be fixed. But the runoff thing is still an issue. And it's gotten worse since they put that much house and that much asphalt on a piece of property that used to be a wooded lot. And I would just like somebody to come in here that have said they were gonna do something about it and come in and tell us what they've done. Because I don't see that anything's been done.
I spoke with the city manager today to see what had happened on his end. They've made numerous attempts to reach the owner. The owner will not return any phone calls from, to him, won't return phone calls to the developer. I've gone out there with Mr. Collins on a couple of occasions to look at the site. I've driven by there myself after some extreme heavy rains we had the other day. And when you look at it, the problem is, I mean, the water's not going anywhere. It comes out the culvert on the opposite of the road and just pawns up. I don't know that there's really any way to fix that without just completely digging out and regrading this other landowner's property, which I would assume he probably doesn't want to have happen. If I was that property owner, I don't think I'd want that water coming onto my property. So I think we can probably assume by their refusal to return calls that they don't want to do anything about it. So we're gonna be stuck on that end. My understanding is the actual detention pond was approved and adopted into the city infrastructure back, I think, maybe 2010?
Two thousand, I think, two thousand.
Is it two thousand?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure there's much more we can do on this actual item when the developers actually gone back and the builders have gone back and fixed the complaints, we believe, that the citizens brought to us. The pond is an issue. I believe Mr. Collins said he has a meeting or some time scheduled Thursday to speak with the developer again with some suggestions, maybe turning that into a retention pond, digging that out to try to make it work better. Because I don't know that there's any way to really fix the issue. Mr. Potter, you might be able to answer this question. Can we really hold, can this board hold the developer hostage on this item for something that's already been brought in and approved in a previous phase?
If it's already been approved, I'm not sure I understand your question. I think what's being asked tonight is the developer's wanting the maintenance bond released. He's wanting the subdivision accepted, correct?
For a phase two, and the pond sits on phase one, which has already been released and bond released. So essentially, the question is, or the later phase, can you hold the bond in the later phase for an earlier phase mishap?
No, I think that you have a responsibility to the citizens of Fairview and that the subdivision is having substantial problems. I don't think that you have any obligation to pass on it if one of the phases is part of the overall project. I understand these things get developed in phases, but if it's part of the overall subdivision plat, you've got one phase, it's having problems like Commissioner Burks just pointed out where the water has no place to go. I think that, yeah, that you can demand that. And if there's pushback from the developer, we'll deal with it.
And to play devil's advocate, I think it is installed as approved and planned per the city of Fairview, dumping into a field across the street with a future plan of Fairview taking on a retention pond there. That was the plan. So technically...
And that's the water problem, you think?
Right, sir.
That was part of the plan.
Yep.
It doesn't appear to be a well-thought-out plan, but that was apparently the plan.
It was the plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Fifteen years ago.
Better late than never. Could I recuse myself just because I live in the subdivision?
Sir.
But here's the other issue, is they're saying because of this new phase, there's still runoff into this pond, which is causing issues. So I mean, I get what Commissioner Burks is saying is basically how can we hold them hostage for our earlier phase. But I mean, in the whole, it wasn't just, this pond hasn't properly worked since, well, since I can't remember. And but the issue now is we've had these additional phases and additional homes. So it's caused in yet another burden on this retention pond. And so I almost think it is, even though he wasn't the original developer, and it may have been approved, you know, the original one may have been approved and accepted, we still have the whole issue of the additional homes and the fact that the issue just intensified, so.
Have these issues been addressed with the developer? Is he here?
No, not this time.
I think he came three or four meetings ago. We kind of brought those issues to him. And at the time, the city manager said they were gonna try and help reach the property owner across the street because we have to gain access to that property in order to remedy the situation. And we've been unable to access or to contact that property owner. So right now, it's dumping into a field across the street that City of Fairview doesn't own, the developer doesn't own. And so you can't get to it to make any adjustments.
Does it have any bearing on phase four that was before you tonight?
I think like the mayor is saying, there's probably some runoff that's going towards that pond that might be increasing the flow of the pond, that's backing up, yeah.
Candidly, I would not approve it tonight. I would move it to a later, to the next meeting of the Plan Commission.
Let's, if can...
And I would, I will work with the city manager to see if I can facilitate some type of meeting with these owners. If we can get them...
Excellent.
Work towards some kind of solution. I don't know that we can, but we can certainly address the issues with them.
Thank you, sir. So try and reach out to them, and also if we could try and get the developer here for the next meeting to be present to discuss. Anyone like to make a motion for deferment?
I'd like to make a motion to defer this to the next meeting, to have a chance for the city manager and the city attorney and the developer to discuss this and be at the next meeting.
First. Second. Quals? Any additional discussion? All in favor? Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson?
One thing, I just, we talked about the development, we talked about the city, we talked about the land across the road. But in the middle of that mix is the homeowners. And so I would also appreciate the praise that the homeowners that have complained quite loudly, that they give us either a written sign off on a punch list or something that they reluctantly or otherwise agree to.
We did mention that. We didn't put in our motion.
Yeah, and I can add that to the motion. And before they come back, that we have something in writing from the homeowners that at least signed up to voice their concerns.
Quals you'll second as amended? All right, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? All right. Maybe next month will be the month we take that one off. Next item, old business. Item two, recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on the rezoning of property and approval of preliminary master development plan requested by Tony Cavender. Hundred and forty-one proposed lots on a hundred and eleven acres, property located along Cox Pike, tax map forty-three, partial twenty-three, current zoning district RS forty, proposed zoning district R twenty PUD. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read those staff comments for me, please.
Yes, sir. This item was deferred at the October twenty eighteen meeting with a request for a pattern book. Details are required improved open space, which would be the five and a half acre minimum, and details of emergency access point. At this time, planning and engineering staff had the following additional comments. Number one, per the traffic study, site distance triangles must be assessed, which may reveal the need for left or right turn lanes on Cox Pike. Number two, in agreement with item two of the conclusions and recommendations of the traffic study, there is some concern regarding the close proximity of the proposed entrance along Cox Pike to the existing entrance of Hall Lane. Number three, stream crossing will require TDEC and/or federal agency approval. Four, details of improved open space are needed to ensure a minimum of five and a half acres has been provided. Additionally, the northernmost multipurpose field will require appropriate grading for it to function as intended since it is located on steep slope.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed present tonight?
I don't think it is.
Is that mic on on the podium?
Oh, that was me. I was like, I hear something.
Thank you.
I'm Jamie Reed with SEC, the engineer that was here last month on this.
Need to turn that off.
Is that me or? As you can see, I've provided a pattern book in the package and hopefully addressed all your concerns from last month. We met with the, Tony met with the fire chief, and in the booklet, you'll see his recommendation of the locks and the gates that they wanted were also provided in the book. Guess I can kind of flip, I'll just go through the book and describe kind of what we addressed in the comments and stuff. Sheet number three is basically the master plan layout. And on that, along with the master plan, the large sheet that I provided, we provided the curb and gutter for the emergency access, like we talked about last month, all the way fifty-foot right-of-way, all the way to the property line. And then on the emergency access over to Lake Road, we provided a eighteen-foot paved, proposed paved drive with fence, four-rail fence, all the way to Lake Road. As you can see up there in the kind of the top, top middle, along with landscaping on the fifty-foot right-of-way side. And then I think there was, you had alluded to the fields, the multipurpose fields and stuff in the back. Yes, we're gonna grade, and I talked to Will today on that. Once we do the construction plans, the grading plans, we will, we'll grade those fields out. Actually, we also want to do a little walkway bridge over to that back one for CUD and for the multipurpose fields in the very back to get to that second field. But we provided the walking trails, the, there's also pavilion with a tot lot next to it, kind of in the middle of the subdivision, along with the multipurpose fields. Kind of go over to page four, and it starts describing the setbacks and amenities and square footages and stuff we all talked about last month. Home sizes will basically range eighteen hundred to thirty-two hundred square feet. All concrete driveways, two-car garages. All homes will be constructed of seventy-five percent minimum masonry products. Include brick, stone, cement, board. Everything will be underground utilities, sidewalks both side, curb and gutter. Also, as I mentioned, the paved access and gates to Lake Road. And then this booklet, actually, we provide almost twenty acres of open space. You know, that's with the five and a half acres of, you know, multipurpose fields, tot lots and stuff like that, amenities and sidewalk, walking trails and stuff. Sheet five kind of gives you some houses that Century, like I mentioned to you last month, Century is the home builder that's gonna build the houses out here. There's kind of some conceptual stuff that they're using. This is kind of just goes in compliance with setbacks and some pictures and square footages that was kind of on the previous page. As will page five point one, kind of shows some more views of the houses. Page six goes into more detail of the locks that the fire chief has suggested. So we spec those along with a sign, emergency, unauthorized vehicles only, with access gates. And then the next sheet after that kind of shows you a blowed-up version, a blown-up version of the typical road section to Lake Road for the emergency access. Actually, it's eighteen feet, so really, you can almost get two cars through that, but we only had thirty-foot of right-of-way as we discussed last month. So we provided ditches on each side of that. So we do have a large pavement section, and we're gonna fence both sides of that all the way to Lake Road. So you'll have a four-plank, a nice four-plank fence all the way to Lake Road. And then kind of sheet seven, just going over that real quick, is a picture of a typical style that, you know, pavilion that we're gonna place on the open space area, kind of in the middle of the subdivision along with the tot lot. So all that'll kind of be grouped together on the same lot, back in the back, or the middle of the subdivision, I mean. Let's see, and I think that's, which is roughly next to lot ninety-two on the plans where the pond is, kind of. That's the placement of where we're going to propose placing the playground and stuff. It's kind of in the middle of the subdivision. Walking trails and stuff like that would be right in that area along with the multipurpose fields. You've got a cul-de-sac that, you know, kind of turn around in that area to park and go to those areas. So we felt that that would be a good location to place that, so. And I'm here to answer any questions. If y'all see anything else that I missed from last month, but I think I met and did exactly what y'all asked. I tried to and meet with everybody and address everybody's concerns from last month.
Will any of these homes have three-car garages, possibly?
With the size of the homes being possibly thirty-two hundred square feet, I would say yes. Most of the ones that, you know, nowadays, if you're like me, I pile everything up on those other two and I don't end up with a third one, so. But I would say probably yes on those bigger homes. But I feel this will be a nice asset to that area. And go back to the entrance out there. We are placing a nice brick entrance sign at the road. We widened it to, that I forgot to mention, to thirty feet. Like Will said, the whole entrance coming in. And we are accounting on placing a left turn lane out on, I just went blank with the name of the road.
Cox Pike?
Yeah, out there. So as far as the site is, we'll do a site distance study, but I'm, that's why I'm gonna go ahead and assume we're gonna place a left turn lane there. That's why we've, they've already placed in the budget. And I'm assuming we're gonna place that anyhow their own construction plans. And we'll transition to that second, you know, past the second entrance into that adjacent subdivision there.
So the traffic study would be like we gave you originally from like Dice Lamplin, I believe, to, where did we go to? I know past Western Hills.
Yeah, yeah. We, yeah, we've already done all that study and whatever it says, but I don't even think, you know, we're going ahead and assuming that we're gonna place a left turn lane there regardless of what the traffic study said. We feel that even, you know, like y'all do, that would be great to have that there, plus with a nice entrance coming in and you have your own turn lane into there.
Do you know if there're gonna be street lights in there or not?
You know, that'll be up to Century, and I'm actually meeting with them Friday morning at eight-thirty to go over the timing of this, the next meetings and stuff. I could ask them at that next meeting. I'm sure they're gonna want some type of lighting. I just don't know what, to be honest with you.
And the only other thing is, you know, what about the HOA? Like, a lot of times, these subdivisions will start one.
Yeah, we'll have to have an HOA, especially for the ponds and all the open space. Yes, ma'am. We'll have to have a third-party HOA. Yes, ma'am.
Because all the open green space is great, but it always comes down to who's gonna maintain it.
Well, they've got, well, they've got to maintain the ponds. The homeowner association's got to maintain the ponds to meet the state's requirements and stuff like that for, you know, cleaning them out, mowing them, getting the debris out of them and stuff like that. So, yeah, there'll definitely be an HOA here, especially to maintain and mow the fields and keep the pavilion and playground and stuff up.
Will it be turned over to like a management company?
Yes, ma'am. A third-party management company. Typically is the way that works. That's typically how Benchmark, you know, slash Century is who it is now.
What's the vision of the multipurpose field? Just a flat surface that's maintained, cut?
Yeah, more of a, yes, more of a level, as level as we can get it. We're gonna clear the trees and level a field out there. So somebody wants to go out there and play soccer, throw frisbee, you know, run their dogs, animals and stuff, but a nice big field to play some type of sport, sports in.
How are you gonna, how are you gonna access it?
Through the walking trails. They can actually go down to that cul-de-sac, main park, or they can walk through the subdivision, walk out there and walk the walking trails to it. There's walking trails that go, that will go actually to the step system. You can either go to the step system or bypass that and go to the two, oh, the ball fields back there.
And we'll see those with the construction plans?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And just like the, like the multipurpose field behind forty-one and forty, right now, it just shows lots with setbacks that doesn't show any kind of access through there. So you'd have to walk behind all those lots to get back there or walk through somebody's yard to get to it. Forty and forty-one, that back left, multipurpose field. You gotta walk through a stream, through the floodplain, to get to the field?
Oh, no, well, you'll go, there's the, the walking trail is next to lot eighty-eight. You'll walk that walking trail all along eighty-eight, and then we're gonna do a nice little bridge over that little creek right there, so they'll walk to the second field right there.
Okay, so you probably won't have access up at that other one?
Yeah, we would rather not since the lots are so tight. I'd rather do it in open space. And a lot of people don't, they want to place fences up, and even if you offset twenty feet through there, a lot of people don't like people, I shouldn't say that, other people walking between their houses and stuff and migrating over into the yards and stuff. It's kind of been a common problem. So if you give them a big area, like a common area, to place walking trails known where this is where they need to be, then that's where we kind of migrate them to.
I think walkability is a pretty big thing. I don't think people are gonna say it's a bad thing. Then another note that came up at the staff meeting was that gate to that, for that safety gate. The picture just seems a little more simple than what I think the original vision was.
Our goal, what Tony and I had talked about is we're gonna place two matching, like the entrance sign out there, two posts on each side, and place the gates there with their locks on it. Place the gate, but it's just gonna be a, we're gonna have two nice posts on each side. Right there, the picture that I show you is just showing two metal posts, but it's giving you an idea that, hey, this, this, those locks were the main thing I was trying to emphasize, that that's what they spec, that's what they want on there. And this is a gate that they've, you know, recommended, but we're not gonna use the two ends. We're gonna more likely do two brick posts is what Tony talked about, two nice entrance posts.
The devil's in the detail. So when you come with the construction plans, if you could show us...
Well, we will. And that's what I'm showing on here, too, is that four-rail fence. So that four-rail fence would run into the post as you come in and to your fifty-foot right-of-way. That's my vision of that development.
Are any of these homes gonna be in a flood zone, do you know?
Well, there is, there is flood in there, but most of it, none of the homes will, some of the lots will. I take that back.
Okay.
The, if you look at, that hundred-year flood comes at the back of like the lots ninety-two through ninety-eight. It kind of just teeters on, they're deep little lots, so the houses will be up close. So some of it will be in the back there unless we fill it. You know, we could fill it all the way to the back property line and take it out of that. Answer your question, there's a handful of lots.
Okay.
Which, that's about in every subdivision I deal with now, some portion.
One other note had the seventy-five percent masonry siding, so hardy board, brick, stone.
Correct, correct.
What's the intention there? That would allow you to have three sides hardy, one side vinyl, like rear vinyl?
Typically, what you're gonna see is the bottom, all four sides, masonry with E's and stuff like that being some type of siding. But if you want me to specify all four sides, I can do that. I mean, but that's the intent. I didn't, I didn't say that, but...
No, I think that'd be good, if hardy board or some kind of cement.
On all four sides.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I think it's real important to me for this subdivision because even though there's a nice buffer and, you know, you have a lot of land, but it does back up to some really, you know, nice homes that is gonna be very important to us, like what we're putting behind them. So if you can specify, you know, that, it's gonna be, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. And I've tried, I was very cautious of exactly what you said in the meeting last month and the meeting before that when you told me to try to... the meeting before that when you told me to try to keep that screening along those bigger lots. And that's what I've tried to do, keep those step system back up there. So that's a huge screening and we're way off of the property, that, that, let's say the western boundary all the way down. So we're, we're trying to keep that nat- natural tree buffer all the way down that left side.
And Jamie, I think it looks good. I wish everybody would bring this just like this. You did exactly what we needed.
Thank you, thank you.
It's stated on here that the cement board should be on all four sides.
Okay, it does? Okay, good. I'm sorry, I didn't look it back, thank you.
Let's just remove that note.
It does, it does say on all four sides. It does on all my sheets. She's right.
Let's just remove that seventy-five percent note then.
Well, it's, well, no, I want to keep it on there because that seventy-five percent saying that it's seventy-five percent of that. If not, then they could come back and put a percentage of all just plastic vinyl siding. I want, what I'm trying to say is seventy-five percent of what they place on all four sides is a masonry product.
It should be a hundred percent.
Well, no, because you've got Es and stuff like that that you can't get certain things in like that. I didn't want to limit them.
But you have a note, you have a note vinyl siding will be used in trim areas and softits.
Yeah, yeah.
But this, I'm trying, that seventy-five percent opens it to where you could put vinyl on the rear and put.
No, 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 it's all four sides. All four sides have to be masonry product.
Yeah, but the seventy-five percent would give you, would give you an out.
So like the, even the example picture, I mean, they could have something.
Yeah, like.
Vinyl or?
Yeah, but. Like on dormers and stuff like that or something, you know, maybe.
We'll pull the minute and say Jamie said.
Well, it specifically says on, in here, all four sides, minimum seventy-five percent all the way around.
We had similar conversations on a prop, another property that you represented and, and those were built out there and not per what we requested. So we're just on Cumberland when we didn't have the brick ones, we wanted the brick on the front side. We had to come back and place the variances and, so just making sure that it's covered.
Yeah.
Can we just clarify to say that each side shall be seventy-five percent masonry product?
Well, I mean, I don't semantics, but I, I think it does, don't it? I mean, it says all four sides seventy-five percent brick, a masonry product.
Well, to be fair, Mr. Reed, I'm an attorney.
Okay.
So semantics matter.
I just know my, I'm good at math.
Understand, I'm not, so.
Well, how do you, what do you want it to say?
I would say each side must be seventy, at least seventy-five percent masonry product. And I think that.
Seventy-five percent out, each side must be a masonry product. It's good to have, it's saying five or six, but in reality the faces are all going to be aluminum. So, and twenty-five percent of any side, the sop and face do not take up twenty-five percent. So I just think we need to say masonry product on all four sides. Trim and sop and face are going to be diamond made. That's the reality of what they're going to do.
Works for me.
Okay.
And there is no question about somebody getting seventy-five percent hardy board with a less than five percent base. House on page five, seventy-five percent.
So remove, so we're going to remove the seventy-five percent, okay? That gets rid of, are you?
All masonry's.
So it's just basically say all four sides is going to be some masonry type product.
But then what prevents them with it? I know masonry's, it is what it is, but you know, what prevents them from doing it all hardy board?
That's a sixty-four dollar question. Hardy board you have the culture of now considered a masonry product?
Yeah, it's a masonry product.
And, and it is.
Yeah, I've got it on, I've actually got it on my house. I put all of this brick and I used that on all my dormers and stuff like that. Don't have to paint it, don't have to do anything to it. It's that color and it's the hard, knock on wood, do anything to it. It looks good, I think.
But.
Mixed with brick and stuff like that, you know.
Well, see, how do I get some brick and stone in there? Because I mean, I don't want it to be a hundred percent hardy board.
Well, you see their pictures here, most of them are, are brick and that hardy board, brick and hardy board. So it's kind of a, a mixture on all their pictures. That's, that's what it looks like. It's brick or some type of product with hardy board.
And so the engineer notes, we talked about the site distance triangles. You'll present those as the construction plans?
Yes, that, well, that kind of negates itself. I mean, it, it, because I'm actually going to, more than likely going to put, like I'm saying, the turn lane in there. So we're, we feel that that's something safe regardless if it's required on, on that road. So I'm, I'm like ninety-seven percent that that's what we're going, we're going to place that left turn lane there.
And how about the note about the close proximity to hall lane? Is that turning lane going to help remedy that or is that?
Yes, yes, that, because, yeah, that's what I was, I'm getting to, yeah, I wanted to extend it on down a little bit further to blend, to blend that in since it's such a close proximity.
And for what it's worth, in the traffic study on item two, that they reference in staff comments here, the very last sentence says that because the projected traffic volumes are relatively low, it is unlikely that the relatively short distance between hall lane and the project access will result in the operational or safety, like challenges. So it's, it's unlikely that it's even going to pose a concern according to the traffic study.
Yeah.
And we didn't need a light at Cox Pike either.
Correct, and also we're going to have a, like Will stated last month, we're going to have a thirty-foot wide entrance coming in. So it's going to be a large established interest, entrance with two signs on it with a left turn lane. So it'll be a nice big, this focal point going in that subdivision for emergency access like we talked about also.
Mr. Reed, I, I look at these open spaces you did, it makes me think of a backseat in a really nice sports car. It's just kind of stuck in as an afterthought and it's not really useful because there's not really good ways to get to it. You've got a tot lot, which most of us have had little kids. We can't walk them from one end of the subdivision to get there. We have to drive over there with all the stuff that goes with them. There's really nowhere to park to make that usable.
Well, what, what, what I was saying earlier is that cul-de-sac, that's what I'm saying, people would go down there and they'd park in the cul-de-sac and along that road where there's no homes, along that pond and stuff out in that road, along the road.
So you can get some there, but then you've got those, those multipurpose fields again. It's, I don't know, it just doesn't strike me as being that user friendly.
Well, it's, it's set up for activity, so it's, you gotta.
Correct. If you're trying to, hey, if you, if you've got a bunch of people to go play football together, great, but you got to get to it.
And it's away from everybody. Because if I lived out there, I wouldn't want to hear a bunch of people back in my house. It's kind of pushed way back in there. You've got step field, you've got the creek going between them. So if there's a bunch of kids out there playing ball and screaming and hollering, it's not going to affect the, as much of the subdivision as it would if it was in the center of it. That'd be kind of my thought of it.
It just still just strikes me as an afterthought, just kind of stuck on there and not planned for, to be very usable. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but.
No, I agree.
The idea is to create the community feel. It is to be in the middle of it where all the kids go to meet and play.
Yeah, but the kids will be running out the street to get their ball and then the kids will get hit by a car.
That's what, yeah, people will disagree with that. It's, it's, a lot of people want it back further in a, in a centralized location away from all the homes. I mean, that's what we say. You don't want to put it right in the middle where you're dealing with, unless it's like a swimming pool, that thing with a parking lot.
You can put in the middle, put a fence around and fix that problem with balls and such. Because people also won't be able to, to know where their kids are and have kind of sight of them somewhat. And there, no one has sight of their kids because it's all way in the back. To get there, they've got to go down one road, park, cross a stream, just, I don't.
Hopefully they're going to walk there for that. That's the purpose of the multipurpose field. They're not going to drive to exercise. I mean, a short distance, a hundred feet.
Unless you're just assuming the multipurpose fields for people just to run around in circles then. In theory, you may want to take some sporting equipment out there that may be, you know, some soccer nets, whatever. Are you having to carry this stuff over the stream, down the walking trail? There's no, there really seem to be vehicle access to get those things there. People want to have a picnic with a big group of people, try to get a grill up. It needs to be usable, not just, again, not just the afterthought. That's why we want it to be improved. And it was why these things are supposed to be done in advance, not as an add-on. Because now you're trying to fit it in because you didn't do it in advance. You're trying to fit it in to make what works for what you already had planned, so.
Well, I, what I would reiterate, go back to is that we have provided nine, almost twenty acres of open space. This is not just, yeah, afterthought, like yours, it, it is because it was brought up last month, but we're adding that. But also we're adding nineteen and a half acres of open space that only five and a half's required. So we're adding four times the open space. So they've got open space galore throughout the subdivision to do whatever they want to do. I mean, I feel that we got a pretty good deal. We've got a tot lot, a pavilion up front in the pond area, kind of centralized, and then the multipurpose fields in the back between the step and the creek area, whereas where you, where you would think would be the good areas to place, you know, the fields. I mean, but you know, not around homes for noise and stuff like that.
Well, I, I still like it because it's another buffer between the neighborhoods that we're backing up to, to this neighborhood. And, you know, as far as access, you know, that's going to be one opinion against another. As far as, you know, some people may want to be able to drive up, take the, you know, picnic in cars and stuff like that. But then also some people may not want this great access for public people to be able to drive up, you know? So I guess it's really just a difference of opinion of what they want. I could see what you, you know, was brought up about the balls and stuff like that. So I mean, I guess it's really just going to be, I don't know, what, go ahead.
I've lived in subdivision where we had very fancy gazebo stands and multipurpose lot tennis courts and stuff, and they were right on the main road.
Anderson, if you will, make sure your mic's on right there.
Anyway, I've lived where subdivision where we've had this stuff is right adjacent to the main road. And we had continuous problems of people coming in the subdivision that we didn't live there, playing basketball, a lot of camera people coming in and taking pictures of babies and wedding stuff and performing weddings in our gazebo's and stuff without communicating with us and then leaving messes.
Means you had a nice neighborhood.
Yeah, it was, it was very pretty. Copperville subdivision and Nashville, if you want, in particular. So having it back out of the way, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. Yeah, it is a little bit of a hike, but if they've got enough energy to get back there and play ball, they've got enough energy to walk there as well.
That's what I.
And you can flip that coin either way.
I just picture it not being cut or maintained and.
Well, and I worry about that.
Out of sight, out of mind, right?
That's the homeowner association's issue.
Yeah, which, yeah.
How, how do you even get back there to take care of that stuff?
You, you, there's a, there's, you got to, you got to mow the pond right there, right beside it. So you've got to get back there and it's access along the creek and with walking trails. So they've got to maintain the pond. So they've got to make the pond and the field right next to the pond and then the one right beside it.
I'm estimating right now, just with my thumbs and looking at the legend here, it looks to be somewhere around twelve hundred feet is a grow flies to get from the cul-de-sac back to that rear multipurpose field. And we're going to try to get someone to go out there and maintain that on a regular basis and to expect like families and people to go back there. I understand your argument, if you want to be physically fit, well, hey, here's twelve hundred feet that you can walk to get out there. That's, we're trying to make stuff convenient for people to get together and to have community, right? We don't want to have anything that's going to inhibit people from being able to like have community together and to get out and like be physically engaged and be physically fit. To have it kind of tucked out of sight, out of mind, I feel like that kind of defeats the purpose of the whole thing. And maybe I was naive, last month whenever we sent you away with like, hey, we'd love for you to do this, this really cool stuff for the open space. But in my mind, I was thinking over here where like lots fifty-six through seventy-two, that little center area, I thought, man, that's about five and a half acres. Like take out those homes, throw in some good improved open space. Or maybe not, maybe down here lots eighty-two to fifty-four in that area, like right smack dab in the center, that would be a great spot. Take out those homes, throw in some improved open space. Maybe further down south, around where the pond is in the center, lots one-twenty-nine to one-thirteen in that area.
You're getting into.
Do you get what I'm saying though?
Yeah, but you're, you're in the valuable piece of the property.
Oh, listen, I understand completely. I'm a businessman. I know you're trying to maximize profits. I'm not, I'm not naive to that. I'm just saying, if you're going to hold to five and a half acres of improved open space, when I look at what we were presented with today, I see a tot lot and a pavilion that doesn't even take up a quarter acre. The rest of the stuff, it's back there. Is that considered improved? It's debatable.
There's walk, well, there's walk, of course, the walking trails and stuff.
What are the walking trails going to be? Is it just going to be?
There's two sets of walking trails, one through the center of the property here that goes from the road to the cul-de-sac behind lot one-twenty-seven, one-fifteen, and then of course back there in the back.
But what I'm saying is, are they like paved bike trails? Like what are they?
What we were proposing was mulch, mulched type trails.
Yeah, I don't know.
Unless, unless y'all specified as the city got us.
I'm just trying to think, me sending my seven-year-old like down this mulch type trail behind everybody's houses to get to a ball field to play, I just, I don't know. It doesn't make me comfortable. But that's, that's an opinion though. Like there are people up here that might disagree with me.
Well, this is not behind everybody's houses. That's why we kept putting it back there. It's not behind everybody's houses. It's separated by the step system and the large creek, you know, placement kind of back there.
You get the point though. It is behind people's houses, it's just further behind people's houses.
But you know, you know, but I'm back to the, you know, we did what y'all asked last month. We've got nineteen, I keep going back to nineteen acres of open space, period, regardless of where it's at. There's eighteen, nineteen some odd acres and there's five and a half acres of usable area that's per the requirements.
The nineteen is great, but I think some of it's unbuildable. You have heavy topo, is some of it you're on site.
Yeah, and you're going to, of course, we're going to have to regrade and, you know, those fields, you know, but I mean.
If you could have had, if lots could have fit on it, you'd have houses on it.
Correct.
Yeah.
But there's, you know, I'm, I'm just going.
He's going to turn it into something that we can use. See, what happened was last month we didn't have a PUD. We said we wanted a PUD, we wanted to see these things. He's brought it back to us. Now, if we want him to tweak something, that's fine. I'm sure he can take it back and decide. Go ahead.
But Mayor, I was also wanted to go back, Will made a good point last month also. If you go by the density, the R20 density, take two-point-two homes times the lot, we're allowed on that two-hundred-and-forty-four lots. We've got a hundred and forty. So we're a hundred less lots on here because of the topo. So I've tried to use, you know, the step system area, the lots, the creeks, these buffers that we're dealt with and tried to place certain things on there.
I think the disconnect is we were anxious to see improved green space. We joked about not putting the same tot lot picture that you put on all your documents. We saw the same tot lot picture.
Well, I asked them what they wanted to put on there. All I can put on there is what the developers say, so.
I'm just saying, we were anxious to see these improvements and we, it's very minimum detail, you put some squares on your plan and, and so it's up for imagination interpretation and I think we're just trying to decipher what it is and did it capture our intent and, you know, what's it going to be like?
And one thing I can tell you.
Of course, the construction.
On your trails.
Yes, sir.
Chips on a trail, those people will be hauling chips in there twice a year. They won't stay on a trail like that.
What would y'all like to see, some type of gravel, drives?
If it's going to be a walking trail, it needs to have some kind of hard surface. Now, that could be whatever you want to be, it could be crush and run, compacted, I, I, but it needs to be some kind of hard surface because otherwise, I, I mean, I'm sure if there's kids in there, they'll have all kinds of trails back in there, but they're not improved trails.
Yes, sir.
To where somebody, if they've got a, a child that's in a wheelchair or something like that, they can push them back there. Now, I'm not saying you need to do ADA, but you need to have a hard surface to call these trails.
And hopefully we'll see more detail when the construction plans come on stuff like that.
Well, that's what I was going to say, we'll have, we'll have specs on the playground, specs on the pavilion drawings and stuff for y'all to review and if it's not, it's planning commission. So when, if it's not to what y'all agreed to, then I'll, we'll go back and add something else to it.
What about the specs on the grading on the multipurpose?
Yeah, we'll have them graded out. I actually talked to Will Owen before I come down here and he said, that's one of his things, he wanted to see those, those multipurpose fields graded out so they can actually be usable.
Correct.
So, yes, sir, we'll have those graded on the construction plan, yes, sir.
Anyone like to make a motion or have any additional questions?
I'll take one additional question now. In this area of Tennessee, if you do any grading, there's not much topsoil. So if you build a multipurpose lot and you just leave chirp on the surface and then think you're going to put grass seed on there, it's going to stay around.
Oh, I understand.
It's not going to happen, you're going to have to have at least minimum four inches of topsoil.
Oh, I understand, believe me, I understand. Our, our goal would be to scrape that topsoil off, wet topsoils there, place it on a pile, regrade it and then level it back out on top of it. But believe me, I understand what you're saying, dealing with that at my house right now.
And, and one other thing, when you talk to your developer, one of the things I'm going to question you on, these lines on these maps are pretty close together and that's pretty steep and there's some creeks right there and I don't want to be in somebody EPA cabin to come back out here and clean up another creek, I want to know how they're going to protect those creeks.
Yes, sir.
And, and I'm going to tell you, silt fence won't work just by itself, they'll end up, the water will come down, push them over, some of those, we probably going to have to have some straw or something along them for me to be happy about it.
Believe me, I, I agree one-hundred percent, yes, sir. And I've tried to protect all those creeks through there with buffers and open spaces, the main creeks, and like Will said, we'll have to have an A-RAP permit to cross the creeks along with our NOIs and SWPs and construction plans. But we have already completed an HD report, hydrologic determination, so we know where the creeks and streams and wet weather conveyances and stuff are.
But I just want to make sure that we try to get those protected because that's something that is almost embarrassing the number of times the EPA gets called to this town and it shouldn't have to happen.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Well, anybody have suggestions on what they want to see if you don't, if you don't like what's presented instead of just, I don't like, what would you like to see maybe as they come back?
I think it looks a lot better than it did last month from what y'all wanted, so. And this, this meets everything that, I thought, at least, I, mine, I thought we did everything that y'all asked and, and went beyond and met with the, you know, fire chief, got that taken care of, you know, and addressed y'all's concerns about minimum, mainly y'all's last time was making sure that we placed homes in there that couldn't be changed, that's why we went back to this PUD.
One thing I think, listen to what everybody's saying, is the long trail back to the back multipurpose lot, if you could figure out a way on lots forty, forty-one or forty-two to squeeze them left or right in order to get a, a path through there to the multipurpose field.
Yeah, yes, I mean, I can.
That way if.
If that's, if that's the dreathers of the planning commission.
Yeah, that, that would, even though it's going between some properties there, it could be fenced and it could be addressed nicely.
Like between forty-one and forty-two.
Yeah, that way you're away from that end of that cul-de-sac, so you do have some curb to work with.
Well, and I don't think you should totally take out the one you have, I think the people that are truly in, to exercise would appreciate a, a length of a trail to walk.
Yeah, that's what I.
Yeah, that you're just, that way you got a loop all the way around.
And you could, yeah, exit.
Yeah, you could put dog park in there, you could put a basketball dog in there, you could put a skate park in there.
Well, I mean, that's.
We're, we're kind of limited, that's some.
I just rebuild our, our whole recreations.
I'd love to if I had them two-hundred-and-forty-four lots.
Well, y'all, you guys are wanting recreation, I'm just trying to help you.
So we've got to keep the houses below three-hundred thousand or below as a starting point and the time you take a lot, you can add a hundred and fifty bucks to the house.
Yeah, it just adds up, adds up, so, but I, with, you know, that in mind, if we, that way would give you a loop trail all the way through there to both, through all multipurpose fields all the way around if we do that then.
That's excellent, I think.
And we just, we'll just put that four plank fence up then between that also to give them a defined path and do a little, that permanent surface path all the way back through there.
Just to add to that, I mean, you could have somebody back there and they get hurt and then if you have this new access.
Yeah, yes, sir.
To have to wheel somebody out in a gurney all that way would be an issue.
Yes, sir.
I'm a big fan of crushed limestone.
Do what, I'm sorry?
Crushed limestone, because it's not muddy when you run on it.
Okay, I'll write that.
Well, I mean, I would say even what.
Crush and run.
Yeah, crush and run is, anytime we've been, I've been to meetings and, you know, park-related, they, that's kind of the new thing as far as it allows a wheelchair, you know, and people, so look into it anyway.
Okay.
Anyone like?
Anyone's fine.
Well, if, if I may, Mr. Reed, I'll, I'll play along. So let's look at the tot lot for a second. Hundred-and-forty-one for homes, I'm not sure what the percentage is of them and it would be like, who would have children of an age that would actually participate in the tot lot area? What's on that picture? It's kind of, this is ridiculously simple, very small. It would be really cool in an ideal world to have something that's between there and like what you would see as a playground over here at Booty Park, like something in between, you know?
Okay, I mean, I'm not opposed, I mean.
That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to making it larger, I mean, this is just an example they wanted to go by, so if you've got, if we've got one in mind, you want me to go look at and, and if you, so something one that's like over here, that was the.
You're talking about the park, the nature park? I mean, somewhere in between there, I mean, that's pretty extravagant.
Yeah, park and.
And that's for our whole city, so obviously nothing that big, but just to give you an idea, now I'm thinking, I'm looking at this picture, like where could people, like parents, families sit around and kind of keep eyes on their kids and hang out with each other?
Well, they're, we're hoping that the pavilion, that's where they're going to have.
Okay, so they're going to be right next to each other?
Yeah, correct, that's, we wanted to place the pavilion next to it at the pond area, so you've got the pavilion, the seating area right there, then you can sit over and watch the kids play on the playground, so it's kind of, my vision was it all kind of be one little.
Fair enough.
Clump of, together.
What a fire pit.
And then, I mean, don't get me started, I can ask for fire pits.
I'll go.
Jamie's like, shush.
I'm going to have to get them.
I, I was thinking about like the walking trails to get out there. Good points, like, could you get a stroller over like crush, I'm not familiar, like, could you like?
Yes, what they're talking about, yeah, you, it's nice, smooth.
Cool.
Yeah, it's, yeah, once it settles down, it's a good little, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Once it heats, yeah, settles down, it, it works really well.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve with the additions of recommendations from the city engineer and the additional trail outlet and the all sides to be masonry products. Anything else before I say that it's over?
Crush and run, did you mention?
Yeah, crush, oh, I like you. Yeah, crush, crush and run and the trails. Anything else I missed?
Protect the stream, the creeks.
Yeah, that'll be on my construction plans, yeah.
Okay.
Stream protection.
As well as a secondary entrance to the multipurpose field.
Yeah, that's the exit with the trail, maybe. Okay, so that's a motion. Did y'all figure that one out?
Mike, did you capture all that?
Let me read it back to you.
Okay.
Made a motion to approve with additions by engineer, trail outlook, all sides be one-hundred percent masonry, crush and gravel on trails and added access to multipurpose fields.
Perfect, is there a second? Second, Anderson, any additional discussion?
Yeah, I was just thinking about Mr. Anderson's comments earlier about how his neighborhood was kind of a really nice neighborhood and it got overrun by people who didn't live there and used it without the permission. What would it look like to have to turn this into like a gated entrance in the beginning, like in the front? Is that off the table, is that something that would be desirable, is that something that your clients or possible customers would even care about?
I think so, what we would like, I'd have to speak with my clients, but what they would rather see is, I don't know if they want it gated, actually, but they want that fill that is gated, like we can, we're going to put a nice big entrance sign on both sides, maybe, maybe they want to put a gate that looks like they're going to shut it, but not ever shut it. That's what a lot of them do nowadays, most, most cities and counties throughout the state don't allow that anymore, they don't want for emergency access purposes and stuff like that, so a lot of them don't do that, allow that anymore. And, I mean, not that we're opposed to doing that.
No, I was just curious, I didn't know if that would be something that would be beneficial.
The negative in homeowners association is usually if you dedicate a gated community, then homeowners associations are responsible.
Or the roads.
Gosh, yeah, okay.
And if sewer stuff come in there and have to do some maintenance and repair, sometimes it's the homeowners association is held responsible, so.
Correct.
Yeah, you, you know, you're getting an association fee that might, with this man at home, might be forty-five dollars, you could go up to a hundred and eighty bucks.
Yeah, so they'd be responsible, yeah, then, and that's the big negative, a lot of people, like, that's why they put that, I shouldn't, you know, the gate fill, look, you know, to it with the gates up there, a big nice entrance, and, and this one will really have that appearance because you've got to go down a long thirty-foot wide corridor with trees on both sides, so you're going to get that nice fill before you get in there.
Yeah, I was involved a little bit with a subdivision called Brentwood Chase over in Nippers Corner area and it's gated and I would estimate that at least once a year one of the gates is broken, falls off, and they're big gates and/or somebody rams the gates and they're constantly having to repair those gates, they're heavy and if you build them on a slope road, then there's no way to put a wheel in balance, it, it's just not, it's not something that's going to be cheap to maintain.
Yeah, I was just curious, I thought you brought up a great point, I just wanted to address it.
All right, we have first and a second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mr. Reed, thank you for sticking with us and.
All right, thank you, guys.
Girls.
All right, we'll move to new business, item three, recommendation to the board of commissioners on the rezoning of property requested by Mark Williams, one acre property located at seventy-six oh-five Hurley Lane, tax map twenty-two parcel one forty-five point oh-one, current zoning district RS forty, proposed zoning district R twenty. We have some staff comments, Mr. Jenkins, if you could read them in.
Yes, sir. The parcel currently has two dilapidated structures on it, which the owner would like to remove for the possible purpose of subdividing the property into two lots and erecting two duplexes in the future. In the immediate vicinity, there are numerous multifamily or duplex developments, including Caspian Hills across Highway ninety-six, a fourplex directly across Hurley Lane and the Fuqua Lane duplexes just down Highway ninety-six. The rezoning request is in compliance with the old future land use plan.
Thank you, sir. We do have, I think we have Mr. Williams present?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
For the applicant?
Motion to approve, we have a second, Anderson, Powers first, Anderson second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Ms. Williams. Item four, new business, recommendation to the board of commissioners on the rezoning of property requested by Philip Caldwell, two acres, property located along Sweetbrier Lane, part of tax map twenty-two parcel one thirty point oh-two, current zoning district RS forty, proposed zoning district R twenty. Mr. Caldwell's present? We do have some staff comments, Mr. Jenkins, if you could read them in for me.
Yes, sir. The two-acre tract has been acquired by the applicant who was a previous developer of Sweetbrier Springs subdivision located across the street. He would like to rezone the two acres to create four new half-acre lots that would mirror the existing Sweetbrier Springs lots across the street. The rezoning request is in compliance with both the surrounding land use pattern and the old future land use plan.
Sir. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Caldwell, come join us.
So, it's across the street from the subdivision and you're saying you're going to mirror that subdivision? Is that what?
Or it's in, it's pretty much in the subdivision, so when you go into Sweetbrier, the subdivision will be all down the right and there's a little piece of property to the left there where he's going to add some lots.
So, so the layout and the development and the lot sizes would mirror it, not the houses? I don't have any, I'm not doing the, the rest of the development, I sold that, somebody else has bought it and developing it, I'm just going to put the four lots along the road if I can get that approved. And I have the three, so where, where I'm asking to have the rezoning, I've actually bought back the three on the other side, so when you come in Sweetbrier, when you get to the end of the asphalt now, the whole main stretch till it turns back east will be, I'll build on both sides of the road if I get approval.
And so you're not building similar homes, what, what's your intent, better or equivalent to home value?
I hope so, but I'd be glad to specify what I intend to use once I, if you, so basically if I get the zoning approval, then I'll come back for an individual lot. If you guys want me to specify the sizes and material, I'd be glad to. But it'll definitely be an upgrade from what's being built there now, it'll be, it'll be a level up on the main street from what's going to get built interior.
Okay.
So we would see it again since it's four lots, are we doing?
We would, but it's not customary generally for, for the plot to have anything contained on it about what the houses will look like, so.
Can I just tell you what they'll be? They'll just be brick foundation, hardy siding, a little bit of stone in the front, a little metal on the porches, they'll be in the range of three fifty to four twenty-five on a crawl space, two car rides, one or two, one of them they have a basement. But they're definitely going to be the, you know, upper-end houses.
Okay, so is it similar to the one, or did you do the ones to the right when you come in the subdivision?
In two thousand, I did, I did, and also just, I did Lincoln Park, you guys were talking about, well, I go the, the green space back up to Lincoln Park, I built those houses.
Okay.
And I'm doing work in Cowles Creek now, they're, they're definitely nice, nice stuff.
That's the only question I have.
Any additional questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
My second.
First and second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving to item five, new business, site plan, one-hundred-and-ninety-five-foot Monopole Cell Tower, requested by SEI Towers, property located at fourteen twenty-five Highway ninety-six north behind Flash Market slash Backyard Burger, tax map eighteen parcel eleven, three-point-nine-five acres, commercial general zoning district, property owned by Flash Market Incorporated. Couple of staff comments, Mr. Jenkins, if you can read them in for me.
Yes, sir. The proposed land use is in compliance with the zoning district, the cell tower and associated compound meet all the city's requirements for setback, fall zone and FCC FAA compliance. At the request of the city and the fire marshal, the proposed twelve-foot access road will be paved with asphalt and a Knox box will be provided for emergency access. The existing tree stand and vegetation will be left intact around the compound to provide a transitional screen per city requirements.
Thank you, sir. We do have representation, if you could just state your name for me.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Steve Carr, twenty-eight ninety-four Aldersgate Drive, Greenwood, Indiana, four-six-one four-three.
Thank you, sir. I think our staff review meeting, the fire department was just asking about access and stuff, are they, are they good with the access?
Yes, the two things that were requested slash required were the twelve-foot asphalt access road and the, the Knox access for, for emergencies.
Okay, perfect.
How soon do you expect to have this up?
They're looking to do it in second quarter of nineteen.
Any additional questions?
Frequency of repair and access to a unit like that?
Yeah, anywhere from one to two times a month, greatly less than a single-family home.
How much bigger, larger footprint does it take to erect? How much more space area around the existing?
We pretty much stay inside of our lease area.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
There'll be some staging of vehicles and construction trucks in the parking area as the current property.
Right, okay.
Any additional questions? Any additional questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Uh, can I ask one more quick question?
Yes, sir.
There was comments about, um, putting landscaping, uh, new bushes around our compound. That is no longer the request, correct, because of the existing tree foliage?
That's, uh, the, they talked about in the staff review.
Okay.
That is correct. It was, um, upon, uh, visiting the site, you can see that it is a, is a heavily, heavily vegetated, uh, mature tree stand back there. And in discussion with Mr. Carr, they are going to leave, uh, what is, what they can leave intact as opposed to just clear cutting the whole thing. So they, they can leave a buffer to, uh, provide the transitional screening as opposed to planting anything new.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thanks.
We have first, did I have a second? We have a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you for sticking with us to the last end there. Bonds and letter of credit, item six, Cumberland Estates, phase two, performance bond in the amount of nine hundred and ninety thousand to cover roads, sidewalks, storm drainage, and other improvements specified by the approved plans. Developers requesting a reduction in the bond. Mr. Jenkins, if you could read those staff comments?
Sir, this item was deferred last month to ensure compliance with TDEC, which has been confirmed by city staff. The city engineer recommends a reduced bond amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
Can you give us, um, any more detail? 'Cause there was that complaint about the runoff from that subdivision.
Um, in discussion with, uh, both TDEC and I believe it was mid, mid-Tennessee Erosion Control, they actually were, um, were quite pleased with the, with the additional work that was done after the, um, the storms in the, like, in the past month, so.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to reduce the amount of the performance bond from nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars to four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
First? Second, Mr. Powers. Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, request to set bond amount, Westway Apartments. Uh, Mr. Jenkins, could you read the staff comments for me, please?
Sir, as background for new members, this apartment project was approved by the planning commission in January two thousand seventeen. The city engineer recommends a site stabilization bond in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
There. I had asked Kristen about before this one, it just, it seems like they don't own all the parcels yet, um, the Westway Apartment developer. Perhaps the three property owners are, uh, working together to try and get to the finish line. But where the entrance comes through right now, that property's still for sale and still in the original owner's name. So we just talked about, they would, they, they wouldn't be able to proceed or procure permits until all that's kind of finalized and figured out, yeah.
Right, this is just, um, one of the, one of the requirements so that they can move forward with getting a pre-construction meeting set up with city staff and the city engineer and, um, so that they could eventually move forward with just getting a grading permit. So at, at this point, um, it's just one of the initial requirements to be able to move forward, so.
Will they be able to get a grading permit prior to staff, staff meeting, the pre-construction meeting?
No, they, no, that, the pre-construction meeting usually does not occur until they've, um, had their bond set and actually, um, city really needs to have that in hand first and have the developer agreement, uh, signed, which we just received, uh, today, so. Those are, those are the steps usually that we require. And then, then we'd have the pre-construction meeting, and then they could apply for the grading permit.
Okay. Any additional questions? Anyone like to make a motion? First? Second, Powers?
Should we clarify the approval is for setting the bond amount at eighty thousand dollars?
That'd be good. Remove your second, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Qualls, if you could, just, uh, amend your motion to include that eighty thousand dollar number, just for. That's perfect. Mr. Powers? Second, Mr. Powers. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, reports and discussion and information, city planner, Ms. Stansfield?
Um, I just wanted to bring up that this planning commission will have new city email addresses, uh, coming your way soon. We have just, uh, the IT department has just switched over our, um, server and email hosting service. So there will be dedicated, um, email addresses for you guys coming, coming down the pipeline. Um, and then next month, we should.
Personal request or?
What?
Personal request.
And then, um, I should have a pretty good draft of a, uh, somewhat lengthy but, um, and complicated, uh, stormwater ordinance for us to look at next month.
Excellent.
That's it.
Any update on the ordinances and stuff, or is on hold for now, or?
Um, the, at least as far as the sidewalk, there was a couple of things that have to be, um, worked through the municipal code before that can be passed. And then, actually, we've, I've been having some discussions with the, uh, comprehensive plan gentleman, Mr. Covington, about, um, working on that together. So it's, it should be, I would at lea, I would like to still see us move forward with approving the new format, um, even if we plan to make some additional changes down the, you know, in the next three, four months.
No, that's what I thought would be good, 'cause Will's completed with his task. If we could vote on it, then it's easier to amend or, or, and check that off the list. All right, thank you. No city engineer. City attorney, Mr. Potter, nothing tonight. Communication for the planning commission members, Ms. Slaughter?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Qualls? Mr. Anderson, Mr. Powers? Wow. It's the first time in five years, I think. Mr. Callie?
No, sir.
Mr. Burks?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes. Hey, I'm gonna say goodbye again. I don't know if it's for real. But I'll just keep saying goodbye as long as I'm here, but keep up the good work. And, um, if this really is my last meeting, um, you know, just keep asking the questions and getting the subdivisions, um, like you want. I know, I do really will miss this. This is one of my, um, favorite parts of the job. So, um, but I truly, um, have enjoyed serving, um, the citizens of Fairview and being a part of the planning commission just for the direction, um, that, and the potential direction we can take our city, and it's kinda starts here. So, um, I've always enjoyed being a part of this, um, team. And I've enjoyed getting to know everybody here and working with y'all over the last year. So, um, not too long tonight, and if I'm here next week, I might write a speech, so, you know, or next month. So we'll just say goodbye for now.
Ms. Jenkins?
I believe we had a pretty great turnout at the Fairview twenty forty meeting on the fifteenth of last month. It was really fun, really enjoyed doing all that. Uh, so thank you to all the people who are watching on YouTube and at home, uh, who came out. Uh, I don't really have anything else. Happy Veterans Day, two days late.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, thank you again. We'll see you next month. Now, accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thanks, Brandon. You're not gonna be here next.